This is really for the public, not so much for us, but Vice Mayor Peppin?
Sure. First and foremost, as it says there, the specific, stationary specific plan, that has been completed. And the most important aspects of that plan are what the city worked very, very hard on in accommodating the city's interests over any development. This is not something that can just happen. The impact that I've heard from residents in this city is that they're extremely concerned about what happens in those areas, and we all should be. Traffic in that area is an F right now. The in and out access to the station area needs to be improved, whatever happens there. And I haven't seen the latest proposals, so I'm not commenting on any specific proposal. I really want to thank staff for taking their time for these different elements like sea level rising, access, traffic, public safety. These are all vital concerns to whatever happens here. So I want to thank staff for being very careful and working with the developers and making sure that the interests of Millbrae and the residents of Millbrae are first and foremost here. We talk about revenue, but revenue needs to be the highest, best use of each and every property. So I look forward to seeing what happens after staff is done, after the planning commission is done here. I think it's extremely premature to say, you know, you're taking too long here. This is something that's going to affect our community for decades to come, and we need to be very careful in how it impacts our city and moving forward. So I'd like to thank staff first and foremost, and I look forward to seeing what's presented. I encourage the public to participate in whatever appears before the planning commission. Your input is extremely important. Thank you for being here.
Councilwoman Snyder?
You mentioned that the May 1st Planning Commission meeting, which had an informational on Sarah Station was taped. It wasn't shown. I had heard that that was only for staff's purposes, but is there a chance that for any of these big projects, we can, even if we don't show them live, we show them taped so that the public can know what's going on? These are big projects. But I was told it was taped, but only for internal purposes. Thank you.
And Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the question is, for our audience at home, can we share what TOD 1 is and TOD 2 is? And then if, is the number one bullet maybe needs to be changed to make significant progress on Millbrae's specific station area?
Developments.
Developments? Is that?
The plan is done.
Is that what we're aiming for? Because the plan is done.
So you devised, as a council, your goals for 2017 some months ago. We're now halfway through the year. Specific area plan has been adopted. That would be considered an accomplishment. You can revise your goals at any time. They're your goals. You'll see that the rest of the page, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of them, are still things that we're working on. So it's the preference of the council if you want to go back into session and work on your goals.
Well, I think maybe just put "completed" or something, so that everybody knows we, you know, we can, I think that's a good thing to show that we completed something.
I think if we just take out the word "specific plan," then...
Well, that's my question. Are we talking about, is that the goal, the specific plan, or was it the specific area?
So the original, the original goal done?
We can get your...
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't have to answer today. This is not...
Right, we don't have to answer today.
Fair enough. Good point, Mr. Lee.
And then, so you brought up the point, I don't want to answer right now, but you brought up the point of sea level rise, and so I'd like to find out later is what, you know, I know, because of the administration, and it's hard to know, they, you know, they're denying climate change, and so that's going to change, and I assume that that's also going to affect our policy and FEMA. So my question is, is that what is the airport doing? And so if the airport is putting their sea wall up, is that mean that Millbrae's going to be the low point now? Because that's going to be a low, Millbrae becomes the low point, we become the funnel. So we need to start looking at what are our surrounding cities are doing, so that we don't become the channel for all the water to come in. The other thing, too, I like to just create what the Vice Mayor said, we have to be careful about throwing out numbers about how much we're going to make, et cetera, because there is no design plans approved yet, so there are no numbers attached to those. There is no guarantee we're going to get $100,000, $1 million, whatever, because we don't have an approved plan, or $100 million, and that's what's thrown out there as well. So there is no number out there, so I'd be very cautious about throwing out numbers that hasn't been vetted yet. Thank you.
Did you want the council, is the council desirous of staff answering the difference between TOD 1 and 2? I think the Community Development Director could give a 2 sentence on each. What is TOD 1 and what is TOD 2? One of you answer the question.
I'm going to pass it over to Key. He probably has those boundaries memorized in his, in his mind right now.
It's not a matter of boundaries, it's which is on which side of the track.
Let's start with TOD 1. TOD 1 is on the west side of the current BART station encompassing part of Sarah Avenue, and that would be including Millbrae Lumberyard and the Conalson Home. And that will have a rental facilities. I don't remember the numbers on top of my head, but it's somewhere about 400 units of apartments in that development, plus another, maybe about 300,000 square feet of Class A office spaces, and that is called the Sarah Station Development. And TOD 2 is on the east side of the train track, the BART station. That encompasses the two parking lot, the surface parking lot in front of the BART station. And that project would include a 300,000 square feet of Class A office spaces, about 400 units, about 375 units of apartments, and also some retail. And on top of that, there is currently a proposal to also construct 80 units below market rate housing and the veterans housing. And at the corners of Millbrae and Rollins intersection, there will be 175 rooms hotel about that, and that is TOD 2, and we call that the Millbrae Gateway Project.
And just for clarification, TOD 1 also includes retail as well, correct? The Sarah Station project?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. The next question from the audience. We have a microphone, we can pass it around.
So I'm encouraged to hear that there's movement on this, there's planning going in. I'm curious, of course, that we, we're talking about station with Caltrans now about El Camino, hear more about what we're doing, of course, this was mentioned, about what we're doing for freeway inlet and outlet, how that will improve, how that will change. That, I think, is probably one of the larger issues that people are concerned about immediately, especially with the construction.
Can you speak to that? Who's this one?
As far as the freeway onrim and off rims are concerned, currently there is no plan because it's outside of Millbrae jurisdiction, although we know that based on the EIR findings, there will be some consequences, to say the least. We are still trying to figure out what is there to do. One of the big things that we all are proposing in our city, including our council, would be non-motorized transportation. So we are looking at pedestrian bridges, try to encourage biking, walking, especially along the corridor on Millbrae Avenue, crossing the freeway and connecting Millbrae BART Station downtown to the existing Bay Trail on the east side. So that is something that we are looking at very carefully, how to, how to do so. And at the same time, hopefully, we can reduce our trip generation from the project, since this is a TOD project, transit-oriented development.
High-speed rail, the mayor's representative city, and what we're working on.
Correct. And Mayor Oliver is sitting on the LPMG Local Policy Making Group on the high-speed rail, and we are also working very closely with the high-speed rail, because high-speed rail is going to be putting a station in Millbrae. We need to also incorporate them into our development plan and not excluding them. So hopefully, we'll come to a very good project for the city in terms of economic development, and we can look at traffic congestion, know how to resolve that, how to manage that. And we are currently actively looking at what we call a TDM, Transportation Demand Plan, from TOD 2, the Gateway Millbrae Project, looking at how the employer, the future employer, will be providing free BART passes, Caltrans passes to the employees in hope of reducing people driving to work alone. Hopefully, that answered your question?
It does. I think that there's certainly problem areas already there, so I'm, at least we're with Caltrans on that. Certainly areas like the South 101, problem area if we're talking about connecting to the Bay Trail, because that is very treacherous. If we are considering overhead crossing, that's probably optimal there.
Trust me, I totally understand what you are saying, because I walk that route every day to go to work. And we are working on a short-term project, we call that the Active Transportation Plan, an ATP. Hopefully, we'll come up with some sort of a standalone small project that we can increase pedestrian and bicycle safety along Millbrae Corridor, especially at the onrim and offrim.
Yes, Vice Mayor Peppin?
And we recently had an update from, I think you were there, Caltrans came to our council meeting. So there are going to be some great improvements along El Camino Real, and we hope the feeders in, from Millbrae Avenue on and off of El Camino Real will be improved, too. I think that's part of the process. So there's been great improvement. Does that mean?
No.
Okay. So, I hear voices, no. But we're really looking forward to working a lot more closely with Caltrans on that, those aspects of it. Key, there is an important aspect that was mentioned here when we're talking about the traffic reports and such like that. We have been informed at a recent event that each parking space at the BART station is worth $50,000 to replace. So I hope that we are considering, whatever developments happen there, the impact of that, because I know when you're trying to find a parking space in that station area, there's like half a floor for BART employees that's like not used, which I don't know what aspect or access we have to any of that, but it becomes very difficult for people who are circling around in there. So just a consideration, please.
This is something that we're also looking at. Parking district is something that we are studying currently. We will be coming to you with some sort of proposal in the next few months as part of our specific plan, PDA and general plans update exercise.
For clarification, the parking garage structure is staying?
At BART station, correct.
But the surface parking will have structures built on it?
That would be a combination of offices and apartment, yes, and hotels.
How many surface parking spots are there now, approximately?
I don't have...
500?
I don't have the number, but the overall parking availability at the BART station is about 3,000, including the garage. I don't know how many surface parking there are.
I'm going to say 500, but I'm not positive on it.
Sounds correct.
Where are those 500 cars going to be parking?
The developer will be providing parking for their development, and there is an opportunity for the city to be looking at a private-public sort of partnership to provide parking, and not just for this project, also for the future high-speed rail station in Millbrae. They're going to be here whether we like it or not. It will be here in 2029.
I'm not going to argue with you, but as much as we would like people to take public transportation, and the walk, and the bike, to get to BART, you have to provide a means to get there. And San Mateo County, the best way is to drive and park and go. So please don't eliminate parking spots and not account for them on the back end here. However, it may go. One other question. You said they're talking, the plans are for a hotel at Rollins Road and Millbrae Avenue.
That is correct.
Is the airport building a hotel?
The airport is currently building the Grand Hyatt at the International Terminal. It's about 350 rooms hotel.
Thank you.
Can we add to that? There've been studies that this area can sustain something like another 2,000 hotel rooms. So the fact that the airport's building one, hopefully, our Weston is also adding another tower. This area in particular, because it's so located to the airport, is very, has a big capacity for hotel rooms.
To follow up on that parking lot discussion, has there been any exploration into maybe a co-located parking lot that would serve not just the station, but also serve downtown? Since I know that's obviously going to be an issue that grows with the, with the specific plan, or the general plan, rather.
There is, there is a underground parking garage that will be constructed as part of the TOD 1 at Sarah Station, and the developer is proposing, providing parking above and beyond what the specific plan called for. I believe the numbers, if I'm not mistaken, is about 15% over the requirement. So there will be access parking on the, on the west side of the station.
Is this just on the parking?
No, it's an open forum, so you're welcome to ask or comment on whatever you'd like.
I'm going to drop down three bullet points there to the public safety. I would like, one of the goals of the council is to look for alternative funding sources to support public safety in this new, and new and improved funding sources to support our public safety operations, so that we can have four persons on our paramedic engine companies that we have in town, so they don't have to wait for two-in and two-out operations. They can make immediate access into the homes and not have to wait for an additional unit. I'd like to see more deputies on the street, and you guys know I'd like to see more cameras, license plate readers, cameras at the critical locations in town that whatever the sheriff's office decides. And there are some definite alternate funding sources out there that I'm painfully aware of, and I've expressed it to a couple of you. And if we do the research, we'll be getting an extra $2 million a year if we can pull that along. If I say exactly what it is here, it'll be low on the top off the garbage can.
So if you happen to be available at 7:00 this evening, just some of the issues you're talking about are at the top of the agenda for the council. There's like two, two small items ahead of it, but then we're going to be talking, Chief's going to be there, and one of his colleagues, it might be of interest to you, just FYI.
That's more appropriate than you do.
Not at all.
Bring it up, I'll bring it up there.
I'm not deferring it, I'm saying in addition to.
Yeah, like you say, we could change that goal to actually where we look for alternative sources of revenue, because they're out there.
Good opportunity to champion my favorite subject, of course, the formation of a safety subcommittee. I think it's long overdue. If that's not in the works, I would love to see it get, become part of this goal.
Just to follow up on that, is there any one of our current committees or, sorry, you're talking about a citizens committee?
Yeah, right, citizens subcommittee.
Would that fit into the scope of work of any of the committees that we currently have? I was thinking maybe Community Enhancement Committee?
That would be the closest, yes.
Not to say that we can't have a separate committee for that.
I can't speak for... Councilman Lee, but we did talk about the fact that environment could fit with safety because of sea level rise, flooding, fires, things like that. The preparation plans have some similarities, but Community Enhancement has a pretty full plate right now, and I don't know how many people might be expiring in the end of June, opening up new positions. It's a different skill set.
Hopefully, not expiring.
Oh, their terms are expiring, their terms are expiring, thank you. Terms are expiring, and I don't know who's, who's applied or who's reapplied on that, but I think we'd, if we did something like that, we'd have to look for some additional skill sets. I'm not opposed to it.
Mr. Lee?
And just because I think this is important for everybody, and you brought up the subject, is that the Sheriff's Department has brought out a really innovative product out that everybody can participate in, and everybody's putting in surveillance cameras or cameras around their homes now, and they have recording devices, and the Sheriff's Department has an opportunity for you to register your camera on, and so then if something happens around the neighborhood, they could, they could use that as evidence. And it's important because, and the sheriff's has been talking about, they can't be in every corner, so even if we hired every officer, you know, we just devoted all to officers, we just still couldn't catch all the things that could possibly happen, because obviously the people who are committing these crimes, they're not going to do something in front of, you know, if they know patrol cars nearby. So the Sheriff's Department is encouraging neighborhood participation, and a lot of us, you know, it would help to have more eyes, more eyes than the sheriffs can provide. In other words, if you, if you have a neighborhood watch program at home near your neighborhood, that would be the best way to, to prevent that, because that actually happened, because my neighbor actually caught somebody jumping the fence in my house, and they were able to catch these people very quickly before they did anything. So the program works.
Yes, Vice Mayor Peppin?
I do see a couple people in the audience who were at the mayor's coffee this weekend, which was really wonderful, and all the feedback. But part of the feedback we got to the Sheriff's Department here was just pedestrian safety throughout the city. People feel like they're risking their lives just crossing a sidewalk. So, and another aspect that came up, some of the comments that I was supposed to summarize and give to the mayor, was enforcement in some of the areas where we have parking restrictions that people do submit, they pay their fee, and they get a parking sticker, but yet we're not enforcing in those areas. So if that's something that we could look at, I think the mayor got the exact same comments, that would be along the same lines here. If we could get enforcement in some of the residential areas as far as the, what are we calling them, stickers or permits?
Permit parking zones.
Parking permits? These were two comments that are specific to that area. So if you can comment, Chief, it'd be helpful.
Thank you. We do actually have a very comprehensive and, and I think a very qualified and successful parking enforcement program, most of which are done by our CSOs, we call them, community service officers, as well as our deputy sheriffs. And they actually go throughout the town and the city, and they do, I think, a fair amount of parking enforcement, and the numbers I don't have in front of me right now, but it's pretty substantial. And the whole idea about parking enforcement is not writing tickets, it's about getting voluntary compliance. We want people to obey the law, not, we don't want to write tickets, but if we have to, we will. That being said, if there's areas that we're not targeting and that we're not hitting, please let me know, if you, specific locations, and I will direct my resources to those areas and make sure that we're doing the best we can with the resources I have. And there should be plenty of resources for me in my bureau to make sure that we are doing enough parking enforcement. It's not, it's not something that's really difficult to accomplish.
You've allowed the city engineer to talk about Caltrans and what we're doing pedestrian safety as well.
Sure. Press that.
Actually, I also like to report that Chief has introduced me to Mike Sanders, he's our captain, I believe, traffic sergeant.
He's our traffic enforcement officer, or I like to call him, I like our safety enforcement officer. He does more than just traffic.
Right. So we have been somewhat meeting on a regular basis, so every time he sees any pedestrian safety issue, he would bring it to Public Works extension, he would write us a little short report, and we'll figure out together how we're going to fix the problem or whatever we can do to improve safety. And at the, a couple of the last council meeting, we invited the project managers of the Small Capital Project along El Camino. It's about a $30 million project that Caltrans is constructing right now. It's along Highway 82, also known as El Camino in San Mateo County. So they are putting in, at all unsignalized intersection at El Camino, they are putting in pedestrian safety devices. In Millbrae, we have five intersections. We asked them to install the HOP system, which is almost looking like a real traffic signal, except it's not fully stopping traffic. It's pedestrian activated, you press a button, the signal mass will start flashing red lights, something similar to what you would see at a fire station or a police department.
That's the, the high overhead, right?
It's a mass, it's actually extend halfway into the, into the roadway, and you would have two mass at the intersection, and we have pedestrian activated. So those intersections, if I remember them correctly, they are at Park, Lutman, Taylor, La Cruz, and the other one is actually in San Bruno, but somehow Millbrae's on the west side. That one is, I think it's Hannah Helena.
So the only thing that I would add is that the goal of the council was to improve public safety, and there were several items that the chief brought back before you, one of which was to add a traffic enforcement officer. So some of the things that the city engineer is updating you on are as a direct result of going back to your 2017 city goals and doing the implementation in the budget, actually getting the officer in the uniform, on the bike, out in the field, and coordinating them with Public Works, so that it's gone full circle to the point where we're actually seeing some benefits.
I believe there was a comment about one of the streets, parking is not being enforced.
One at a time, just a second. Go ahead. What are you asking?
Microphone, please. And if the members of the public can also please, if you can also please identify yourself when you speak.
I'm F. K. Davis, and I was asking...
Microphone, please.
Okay. If I parked in red, would you give me a ticket?
Anybody who parks in an area that they're not supposed to park is subject to a citation, but not just that, depending on if it's creating a traffic hazard or a safety issue, we may have to tow the vehicle. So one or the other would likely happen if I have, if it's observed, yeah.
I have been down to the police department at least a half a dozen times in the last year and a half complaining about Helen Drive. The cars park right on top of the sidewalk, and it's impossible to walk through. There was a handicapped man at one point with a motorized wheelchair. Thank you. And he was out in the middle of the street, and I stopped him, and I said, "So, sir, I think this is very dangerous for you to be riding your wheelchair down here." He says, "I can't go on the sidewalk because the cars are in the way." I have also seen people, there's a daycare center or a 24-hour care in one of the streets near Helen Drive, and they're taking wheelchairs, walking their patients, and they have to go down the curb and around the street and back on the curb again to avoid the cars. I have complained so many times about this, and nothing's ever done. Every day of every week, you will see cars on top of the sidewalk there, and I have a picture to show you. I took one yesterday. I walk that street all the time, a little walk in and out of Millbrae. And I also understood that there, that we have about 22,000 people at Millbrae right now, and there's only one traffic officer on a motorcycle taking care of 22,000 people on the street all over Millbrae. Is that correct?
We do have one motorcycle unit for the city of Millbrae, and I thank the city council for approving that position, which was approved, I believe, last October. He has, I believe, paid significant dividends in benefiting public safety for the city of Millbrae. In addition to enforcement, he's also doing some education and some engineering with our Department of Public Works, and he's working with the schools and other communities, areas within the city of Millbrae. But he's not the only one who writes citations or who does traffic enforcement. All of our deputies do that, and I believe that, I put in, in my annual report just a few months ago, there's some statistical information which will show that. Obviously, we can't be everywhere all the time, but we certainly are open and receptive to neighborhood and area concerns, and if this is a particular area on Helen that you're mentioning that's not getting enforcement, I'll certainly look into that, and I don't know why, because we're generally very receptive on that. If you'd like, I'd be happy to go back and have my analyst look at this specific area to see if there's been any citations written, and if there's been any enforcement there. And either way, I will make sure that, that our unit, specifically our traffic enforcement officer, knows that area and knows to enforce it. He's been very receptive to community concerns, so I don't anticipate, or it shouldn't be an ignored area, so we'll take care of it. So we'll take care of it. Okay. Is there a specific time of the day, or is it all day?
Usually, mostly in the morning and late at 3:00, 8:00, drive here now to the- and trucks too.
Okay. To follow up on that, one thing that I heard from one of our former police chiefs that had been done in the past a few years ago was that they went out, you know, one evening, and they've done it a couple times, you know, late at night, and they put, you know, they didn't ticket everybody, but they put a notice or a warning on every vehicle that was parked, you know, significantly onto the sidewalk, you know, to the point where a wheelchair or a stroller couldn't get by on that street. And it was something that they've done in the past, so maybe something to consider again. Thank you.
What I've heard from people, anytime there's a street with the curved sidewalks and it's busy, is where the cars are parking up there, because closer to Cappuccino, there are people too, trying to look out for their neighbors with disabilities to be able to park there. And I know we've got that one street down in Marina Vista that actually has a white line painted on the sidewalk saying, "Don't park over." It's a weird street, it's narrower than all the other streets. But if we could see what some of those plans are and let the neighborhoods know, that would be helpful. But I've talked to a number of people, or a number of people have contacted me. Those curvy sidewalks, great, protects your car, doesn't help people.
Vice Mayor Pippin?
I'm sorry, Chief, along those same lines, we also heard this weekend about mobile homes.
About, pardon me?
Mobile homes being parked.
Parked on the street.
There's one at the top of the hill. Yeah, this is not a mobile home park, but regular, I mean, there's just an enormous, it's not, it's, what is it?
I believe it's on, well, there's that one that I see all the time on, I think, Clearfield Drive.
Clearfield, that's the one. But, I mean, that's one, but if we don't have a regulation and we need to get a regulation, I know we have, you can't park more than 72 hours on any street. But as far as large commercial vehicles or large mobile homes, could you let us know if we need to upgrade our ordinances to protect the residents? We'd appreciate that.
You have to have signs when you get to San Mateo, no oversized vehicles overnight allowed on the streets. And that particular mobile home you're talking about, at one point, their neighbors were complaining, some friends that lived up there, and they said they just drive it, shoot back and forth, and then park it there again. So-
Very briefly.
In other communities, some of those mobile homes are people who are living out of their vehicles. And in those communities, I don't know if that's a problem that we're having here. In those communities, they've worked with local church groups to open up their parking lots at night, so there is a safe zone for families who are living in their mobile home parks. So just something, and it's happening more so in Santa Clara County than I've seen happening up here. But if it's becoming a problem, then maybe that's a solution we can work out with the faith community.
Ms. Creach?
Thank you. I wanted to get back to the changes that Caltrans was making on the crossings on El Camino. You said there were five, but only four in Millbrae. Are those, are those the only intersections? Millbrae has a lot more than four intersections. And I'm wondering if there are plans that you know of that are coming down the line to improve the remaining intersections.
The rest of the intersections are already signalized, such as Victoria, Hillcrest, Santa Street, Meadow Glen. So those are not going to be, receive additional treatment for pedestrian safety because they are fully signaling.
How about Center? What about Center?
There's a signal light at that.
Right. Santa Street, they're just right by the old Martin and Nellie Restaurant.
Right, 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 but it, oh, but I'm talking about the flashers.
The flasher are going to be installed at intersections that currently do not have any traffic signal. They are uncontrolled. All they have right now would be just a painted cross.
Okay, I missed that piece. Thank you. And then I just have a, from my own information, I live on Helen Drive, and I live right in that blind curve up at the top. And believe it or not, people just about get hit in my residential neighborhood crossing this street, because right on that blind curve coming on and off the freeway, people are flying. I'm sure they're doing 45 or 50, and you can't see more than 50 feet. And I'm wondering how I would go about asking for speed bumps or something there to slow them down? What's the process?
We currently do not have a citywide traffic calming policy. We have not introduced speed bumps or speed bumps to our city, because we really need to work with the fire department and the sheriff department, because that tends to reduce the response time. So for them, every split second counts. So this is something that we will, we can consider, but we have to collectively work with our public safety department. And in terms of setting traffic speed limit, there's a way that we go by California Vehicle Code. We collect traffic speed, and we do a sampling, and we set the speed at 80, 80 feet percentile. So this is how we set the speeds on Helen, and we just recently, actually, we did the speed survey in late 2016. And I believe we also had installed some sort of warning sign asking people to drive slow around the blind curves on Helen Drive. That probably was done a couple months ago.
I have not seen any sign, no signs.
I think it's right by Helen Tank Side, we have put up some warning sign, some yellow warning.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Nonetheless, if there are areas that you're aware of that are problematic, mentioning them to the chief will call it to his attention, and he can then, in, what do they call them, morning briefing sessions, make sure that the officers are aware that there are issues. As he said earlier, it's impossible for them to be everywhere, so the community with input like that is very good, strong input. Make sure you tell them what part of Helen before you leave, okay?
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick thing, so if we have another area-
Sorry, microphone, please?
No, it's just a follow-up on her question, if we have another area that is where there's a speed demons going by, should we just go ahead and talk to you private, or on the side, or should I bring it up now?
Your preference. We're running to the end of the meeting. If we don't get all the details from the chief, make sure you do before you leave.
If I can add this, because we probably, there's a lot of issues that I know that we don't have time for, so I'll just make this brief, is that our, we do have our lobby, it's open, it's open every weekday during regular business hours. Even though I heard that there's not been a positive response on some of the concerns, let us know what it is, and that information will get filtered out. I don't know why there hasn't been response to some of them, and I'll look into that, but that's really the best channel to do it, reaching me directly. I'm here now, but I don't want to take the council's time. But, you know, just letting the police bureau know will make sure that we follow up with it.
And then I do have a question. I'm not sure if this is the time to bring it up or at the next meeting, but I had some questions about the proposed ice skating rink that's being considered. Is this the time to bring it up, or do I wait for the 7 o'clock meeting to bring up my questions and concerns?
This is a good time to bring it up now, it's not on the agenda for 7:00 PM.
It is not?
It's an open forum, so now's a good time.
Okay, great, yeah. I just, I have my concerns, especially since we've been-
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself as well?
My name is Gigi Glafkeidis, and I am just asking about, since we've been talking about budget issues and concerns, and the possibility of wanting to bring on another traffic control person, I do have control, concerns about this proposed project, considering the expense of it, and I think, knowing that we have many other areas of priorities that should take place, I'm not sure what the best way is to talk about it, or, you know, I'm just expressing concern, especially since we have stronger, more concerning needs that should come ahead of the ice skating rink project.
Can Councilmember Aliva have a comment on that? Any questions?
So while I totally could respect the funding of this, I'm not quite sure how much it's going to cost. So I've seen a lot of numbers flying by, but we have no business plan. So it's hard to comment on something that we have no business plan to. With regards to something that possibly could make money, I'd be open to the idea. And I think that the public kind of jumped the gun to the idea before we did. While I'm excited about it, with the majority of the council is, we don't have a plan. So to be worried about what we're going to spend, I'd like to see those numbers.
I know what's been floating around when you read articles is $250,000.
Yeah, I've read the same articles, I would imagine, but I haven't seen anything in writing for that.
Can I just also comment that if staff is currently preparing a business plan, that we also need to take account for Bridgepoint Ice Rink opening up in September, which could affect the potential demand for an ice rink in Millbrae. Vice Mayor Pippin?
Yeah, and we've heard a lot of comments from the public, we greatly appreciate all that. We are awaiting a specific business plan here. The mayor is correct, we would like to find out, it's been announced that Bridgepoint is going to open. We would be, also be curious to see what the city of San Mateo is going to do too, because I'm not sure if they brought in their temporary ice rink when Bridgepoint closed. Are they going to do the same thing this year? I mean, these are all aspects that would affect any sort of business plan as Millbrae moves forward here. So we're hoping that the next business plan that's presented covers all these bases, because we have heard from the public, we greatly appreciate that. We still encourage everyone, you know, if you can't come to these meetings like Gigi did here, you know, you can comment online. We want to make sure, the first presentation to the council just threw out a number, which we don't feel is all accurate here. We want to make sure that this is a very informative decision moving forward, and see how we can, what this is going to look like. So we're hoping that it covers everything.
Mr. Rep, we just have a few minutes left, so let's keep it to the audience.
Sure. Can you clarify if staff is spending time on building a business plan right now?
Yes.
Okay, so we're already spending money on this, is what I'm hearing.
Time.
Time is money.
Time is money.
I mean, it's taxpayer money, right? We're paying the staff.
I don't think we deny that, in fact. I think what's going on is that we lost our community center, there's no place for people to gather, so we're looking at all sorts of ideas. We already spent a lot of money that we don't get any revenues from, like our fields. We spend a lot, a lot more money than we do spending time on this ice rink, I'll tell you that much. So we're always looking for ideas. So if you have any other ideas, other ice rink that can help bring the community together in place of our community center at this point, we would welcome those. And we will evaluate those. And I don't think it's a waste of money to try to bring recreation to our, recreation and opportunities for our community to meet.
But that's not the issue. It's not an issue of not bringing recreation, it's an issue of bringing the right recreation in the right places.
That's right, so, that's right. So we're open to all sorts of ideas. And obviously, you know, if we were in Minnesota, this would be a no-brainer, but this is not Minnesota, we all understand that, so.
We understand that, but-
Yes.
The question still remains, is it a wise use of time spending on doing a business plan for something that has, especially now with Bridgepoint reopening, a lower chance of economic viability?
That's an excellent point, Mr. Rep. We have another comment from Ms. Colpietra.
On a different topic, and going back to the neighborhood issues that the, that Chief Copeland has been talking about, I'm wondering if there's a possibility, because you had indicated about the office hours, that the substation is open, and I'm thinking if there's some kind of a possibility that there could be something on the city website that would make it convenient for the residents to go to the website and just put areas of need there, and it would make it simple, I think, if that opportunity was there, since there's so many. So I'd like that to also be taken into consideration to make it easy, because I think you could file police reports on the website, if I'm not mistaken. So that might be something for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it is 7 o'clock.
One quick thing, sorry.
Final comment, and then we will adjourn to-
And along the lines of public safety here, too, it's a community effort here. So if anybody's been downtown and you've seen the big plank on this Pete's Coffee Shop, somebody threw something at that window and broke it, we need to, as a community, if you saw what happened, I think it was last Wednesday, please report it. These are huge property damages, so we, if you see anything, as they're saying now in England, call, report it. I think it was Wednesday or Thursday evening, so please report whatever you see. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for being here. I think we had a good discussion. We are going to adjourn to our regularly scheduled city council meeting at 7:00 PM. If you had any final comments or questions, you're welcome to give those in public comment at the council meeting, and we hope to have another one of these meetings again soon. Okay? Thank you, everyone.